Committee reports, or reports from Commissioners. Raton Water Works.
No report.
Raton Public Service. Commissioner Jacamo?
RPS Board of Directors. Special Meeting was held on November 9th at 5:30 PM. The main purpose of this meeting was to discuss and take action to hire a new General Manager, of which by a vote of four to zero by the Board members chose Sandy Chavez as RPS's new General Manager and David Pensino as RPS's Assistant General Manager. RPS Board of Directors Meeting, regular meeting, was held on November 20th, 2017 at 5:30 PM. Financial and statistical information was received and approved by the Board. RPS General Manager Sandy Chavez and Assistant General Manager Dave Pensino gave their report on Unit 4 runs scheduled to be addressed, to address Smith Power Products warranty issues, and the date was passed and approved, and the date was approved by the Board for the downtime. That's all we've got.
Okay, thank you. Senior Citizens Board. Commissioner Chavez.
No report.
Planning and Zoning Commission. Commissioner Schuster.
There's no report.
Housing Authority. Commissioner Schuster.
The Housing Authority met November 21st, 2017 at noon. There was no major business. They did report that they're working with the auditor and it's moving slower than they like, and they're also working with the Maxwell Housing Project.
ETZ Zoning Commission. Mayor Pro Tim Segada.
No report.
North Central New Mexico Economic Development District. No report. Library Advisory Board. Commissioner Jacamo?
Monthly meeting, or by monthly meeting is scheduled for tomorrow night at 5:30 PM.
Okay. ETZ Zoning Authority. No report. Financial Advisory Board. Commissioner Chavez.
The Financial Board met on 11/27, and we approved the finances for the presentation to the City Commission tonight.
Our first item of business is the approval of the November 14th Regular Commission Meeting minutes.
Madam Mayor, I found no deficiencies in it.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Public Hearing. Ordinance adopting a supplemental municipal grocery receipts tax, providing for an election, repealing ordinance in conflict herewith, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commission, this is in regard to the one cent supplemental grocery receipts tax that we have talked about at the last meeting. The requirement is that we have a public hearing prior to the Commission approval of the ordinance or action on the ordinance. The action would be to repeal the existing ordinance that implemented the 1% supplemental grocery receipts tax that is dedicated to water system improvements, along with the adoption of a 0.75% supplemental grocery receipts tax. So you see that we have a number of items on the agenda, B, C, and D, related to that action, and we have set up the public hearing for input of the public. Now, Mayor and Commission, I have not received any other input from the public prior to the meeting, other than a discussion of that at the Financial Advisory Committee meeting, where there was, I think, a favorable consensus to that implementation. So I would pass that along to you all, that that came from the Financial Advisory, not in a formal vote. I think they had made their recommendation previously to the Commission, but at yesterday's meeting, there was a consensus of those present that were favorable to the action. Now, you all have a press release from our delegation representatives that talk about the filter plant improvements, and a little tardy on getting that to you. You can see that it was issued actually last month, but that is the type of project that is supported by the supplemental increment. So you have information there, and Marty, I can get that to you if you don't have that, but that's pretty informational.
Is there anyone that would like to address the Commission at this time on this issue? If not, we'll go on to Item C. Deliverate and Act on Ordinance Adopting a Supplemental Municipal Grocery Receipts Tax, Providing for an Election, Repealing Ordinance in Conflict Herewith, and Declaring an Emergency.
Okay. Do you want to just address that?
Just to clarify.
Mayor, if I could, I would offer a clarification that comes from our City Treasurer, who has put together the documents.
City Manager Barry had mentioned that the ordinance that will be taking action on this evening actually also repeals the current one cent tax, which it does not. So this action tonight is for a three-quarter cent tax increment, and then later on next year, when the bonds are paid off, we would do an additional ordinance to repeal the one cent. So this action tonight is what will be placed on the ballot, which is a three-quarter cent tax increment, and would be placed on the ballot for the March election. And then you'll see on the election resolution in the next item, we have the two questions related to the adoption of this ordinance and the bond. So I just wanted to clarify that. So we would be coming back to the Commission sometime after the election, later in the year, to do another ordinance to repeal the current ordinance for the one cent. But we wouldn't do that until closer to the time when the bonds are going to be paid off.
And there'd be a separate, if there was a favorable vote, next to the public's vote, there would also be a bonding ordinance to continue forward with what's on that next ballot. This actually just proves putting it on the ballot.
So we just didn't want to cause any confusion there.
So that's an important clarification, and, you know, Michael Ann and Dan are available to answer any questions you have, but we want to make this clear to the public. This will be a referendum item, and it's following a process that is established by the state of New Mexico for us to follow. But that's a good clarification that we're, the action basically is to set this up for consideration by the voters.
May I ask, just for the public's clarification, there would actually be no time where they're taxed both the one and the three-quarter, correct?
That's correct.
So I want to adopt supplemental municipal grocery receipts tax, providing for an election and declaring an emergency. Is that correct, stated?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the supplemental municipal grocery receipts tax, providing for an election, and repealing ordinance in conflict herewith, and declaring an emergency. Can we have a roll call, please?
Point of order, please.
Yes.
This is Ordinance 997, right? That's what it's going to be designated?
I guess it will be Ordinance 997. Okay, roll call vote. Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacamo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Segada?
Yes.
And Mayor Matt.
Yes. Motion passes. Deliverate and Act on Resolution 2017-58. A resolution for a regular municipal election, for the election of municipal officers, and the question of a supplemental municipal grocery receipts tax shall be held on March 6th, 2018. Polling will open at 7:00 AM and close at 7:00 PM.
Mayor and Commission, this is an additional item that our City Treasurer has been working on and put together. There is a revision in regard to the question that will be on the ballot under Section C, and that's the supplemental municipal grocery receipts bond question and tax question, and I'm going to ask the Treasurer to, you know, provide a, really a clear summary of what's contained in the resolution.
Mayor and Commission, earlier today, I did give you the revised version of the election resolution. So this resolution essentially calls for an election that would be March 6th of 2018. We do have two positions for City Commission. That would be District 1 and District 3 for a four-year term, and then also the municipal judge position for a four-year term. So the ballot would also have two questions. You'll see the first question is the supplemental municipal grocery receipts bond question, and then the second one is the supplemental municipal grocery receipts tax question, and that's in regards to, shall the city impose a tax rate of the three-fourths of 1%? We have designated the same precincts as in the past. That would be the Parish Hall and the Convention Center. And then also, we would hold absentee and early voting in the City Clerk's Office, and we've provided the dates for that as well. And then anybody that is not registered to vote would need to do so by February 6th with the Colfax County Clerk's Office in order to be eligible to vote in the March election. Anybody wishing to declare candidacy for one of the two City Commission positions or the municipal judge would need to file their candidacy on January 9th, and that is the only day between 8:00 and 5:00 that the candidacy can be filed. If that deadline is missed, then the following Tuesday, there would be a write-in candidacy form that they could file, and that would be the only day that they could file to be a write-in candidate. Once again, we will do paper ballots with the electronic vote tabulators, so that has not changed. Is there any questions?
And Mayor and Commission, I would just add to that, that we've talked about this at the previous Commission meetings, but under Section C, Point 1, it talks about the grocery receipts bond question and the authorization to issue bonds for the municipal water supply purposes. And I think we want to be very clear on what is planned, and also be very clear that that is over a long period of time, that we would implement those improvements to the water system. And so we do have Mr. Campbell available here, who has done the planning on water system improvements over the term, that would be planned from the implementation of the 0.75% and also, you know, related to this bond question. And so he's available. And Dan, I don't know if you would just come up and kind of give us the highlights of what would be planned and what the term would be for that bond question.
Well, the term for this would be actually, is the same one we're coming out of, it would be a 40-year term. The $7 million bonding project, similar to the Cimarron Pipeline and the original project back then, it would actually be, the baseline project that was before the Water Board is actually going through almost 40 years later and upgrading the Cimarron Pipeline, hopefully for the next 30 to 40 years, which is replacement of some pumps, replacement of some other equipment out there. Pipeline would still stay the same, but it would update, in all the same facilities, but would update the pumps, the controls, a lot of that type of system. Then also would be a project that you see right at the filter plant, some of those types of projects, but the rest of it would all be dedicated, as it has been, as the ordinance was set up and as state statutes set up, to where once those bonds are, payments are made, once any reserve payment is made, any other portion would just be go to the water system only. And that's what's happened before. They've done projects throughout town on water line replacements. The biggest project always comes to my mind was Second Street's replacement from the north end of town to the south end. All of those types are reclaim system that throughout the waters, all the parks and stuff. It would only be used on that use, and would be controlled only from the water side of it. But the baseline project that's being talked about is principally to update the Cimarron system.
And there would be nothing for sewer?
No.
This is only water?
The way it's set up, it's set up water only, and the way portion we'd actually gotten and looked at before was only things that were brought back into town to use. So it has been used on the reclaimed portion of sewer that brought it back in for irrigation, but not for wastewater treatment, because that is the way the state statute's written, is acquiring and equipping a water system.
Okay. Because I know it wasn't in here, and that's why I was asking.
And Mayor, I would just, you know, add that anybody in the community that has any questions about, you know, what the plans would be, they are surely invited to call me or come to City Hall, and I think I'd offer that with Mr. Campbell as well. We can sit down and talk about, you know, what those funds would be dedicated towards and what the plans would be.
The benefits of the one cent is, up to now, which would then change to three-quarter cent, which would represent a tax reduction, both of those, one ending the end of 2018, the other one beginning January 1st, 2019, to where there would be no overlap, has been what it's done, everybody would see throughout town, not only the quality of water, but the quality of the system and the work that's been done, but no different than the other town. You're looking at the age of the Cimarron System, a project we're using, still using that's gone through some remodeling projects, but a 1946 filter plant. You're looking at two of our main storage tanks in town, our vintage 1946, 1947, to where the aging infrastructure that's facing the rest of the country, we continue to battle with. This has helped us stay ahead of that. And then in crisis mode, it has actually had a great deal with our quick response and what we have, we're able to accomplish after the track fund, is just having those funds available to quickly move forward. And definitely, if anybody has any questions, anything we've done used, just don't hesitate to give me a call.
Madam Mayor, I would make motion then that we adopt Resolution Number 2017-58. A resolution for a regular municipal election, for the election of municipal officers, officers on the question of a supplemental municipal gross receipts tax. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the election of municipal officers and a question on the ballot for a supplemental municipal gross receipts tax. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Segada?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacamo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Matt.
Yes. Motion passes. Deliverate and Act on Resolution 2017-59. October 2017 Financial Report. Michael Ann?
Mayor and Commission, in your packet this evening is the financial report as of October 31st. You will see that our available cash, less the 1/12th reserve in the general fund, is The distribution of grocery receipts received in November is still 5% year-to-date per budgeted projections. It's a 5% increase per that projection. And as we've stated in the past, going into the winter months, we do anticipate seeing a slight decline in that. The November distribution represents September sales. We also anticipate the first half of property taxes are now due and payable by December 15th. The city will get its share of the property tax distribution probably late December, and then another one in January. And as always, that distribution of property tax does assist in improving our cash flow for the remainder of the fiscal year. Other than that, all of our departments are operating pretty much below budget as far as expenses go on the general fund. And as far as grants, I did receive today the reimbursement from the New Mexico Aviation Division on the Taxiway D reimbursement, and I'm also told by the City Manager that we'll be submitting reimbursement on the Taxiway A project. So those are the two projects that we're currently working on. Last month, we're in the process of closing out the Schuler project, and I guess getting ready for the legislative session also, which we'll probably talk a little bit more in the next meeting. Is there any questions in the financial report?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-59, October 2017 Financial Report.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2017-59, October 2017 Financial Reports. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Deliverate and Act on Resolution 2017-60. Budget Adjustment Number 5, Fiscal Year 18. Michael Ann?
Mayor and Commission, this evening, we have a real simple budget adjustment. The library received a $1,000 donation from a library patron, and at their request, it would be to purchase books and periodicals. So we're just showing an increase in our revenue under contributions and an increase the library's line item for books and periodicals.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? For Michael Ann?
I'll move to accept Resolution 2017-60, Budget Adjustment Number 5, FY 18.
I've got a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2017-60. Budget Adjustment Number 5, Fiscal Year Ending 18. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Deliverate and Act on Lodger's Tax Recommendations. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commission, we do have the team present tonight from the Northeastern Mexico Educational Foundation, and they will come forward and give you a proposal in regard to digital marketing services. I do understand, and Jessica, you might correct me on this, but the Lodger's Tax Board, I think, did not ultimately wind up with a recommendation.
They didn't have a quorum.
There was not a quorum, and I think those that are present said, we should just go to the Commission, because there is a timeliness issue with what we're going to discuss here. So we're really doing it without that recommendation of the Lodger's Tax Board, but at any rate, I would ask Mr. Peterson to kind of lay out the proposal, and it's an ongoing effort at the digital services. And I can tell you that before the meeting, I went to the exploreratone.com website, and if you haven't seen that lately, it's especially good. It's very good, and I think we're getting good results, but Jeff.
We just want to have Madam Mayor ask, I am on the New Mexico Educational Foundation Board, I will abstain from this.
So before we dive into the updates on the Google Grant and the activities at the website that Jessica will provide, I just wanted to give a, take this opportunity to give a quick snapshot of some of the activities we have ongoing at the center. And I won't go through all of these, but what I did want to highlight is a project that's just popped up. It's sort of been in development for a while, but now it's really gaining some steam, and I've been working on a coworking space at that center. So we have lots of space there, and we're trying to figure out ways to maximize the use of that facility. So I've converted one of the offices into what's called a coworking space, where people can come in and rent, they can rent a monthly rate or a drop-in rate to utilize high-speed Internet and then utilize business services such as business plan development, use office equipment, et cetera. So I had got, won some awards from the Leeds, New Mexico Economic Development, some Leeds money with the help of Grow Raton to help equip that office, so now it has some nice new chairs, printer, cameras. It's got some nice features to help it create that environment that you see in a lot of these urban centers. And then recently, in the last few weeks ago, I got a call from what's called Fat Pipe Albuquerque. Fat Pipe Albuquerque is sort of New Mexico's premier coworking space. It's like a business incubator, a lot of tech people set up there, and it, what it does is afford them a low-cost way to develop their businesses. So they get their monthly plan or what have you, when they're able to go into this facility, network with people, utilize the high-speed Internet, utilize the business development services to grow their business. So Fat Pipe Albuquerque is, wants to create a network of fat pipe facilities across the state. So they contacted us, said, we heard something's going on in Raton, tell us about what you're doing. So we described our little facility, and so now we're very close to an agreement right now with Fat Pipe Albuquerque to create a Fat Pipe Raton. And we would be one of three rural towns in New Mexico to have this type of facility, and being located right on I-25 with the fiber service that we have to the center really makes us an optimal place. And they're very excited about the opportunity to come up and visit and work the facility, and we're very close to finalizing that agreement to where we would utilize the facility and help them. And I'm working with Paul Jenkins to grow Raton right now to make the presentation to the Explorer Phenomenal Department for what's called this Solo Works Job Development Program. So we're applying for some RAT funds to pay for a part-time staff member at the center and a small income as well to cover some of my salary that I'll do to support the coworking space and support that Bo Camp kitchen. So right now, all the work we've been doing at the center for the Bo Camp kitchen is coming out of our general, our general operating budget of the center. This affords us an opportunity to help get reimbursed for that work to help grow the food businesses, which the food entrepreneurs would be welcome to use this facility and help take advantage of the business development services that are going on. So just wanted to share that, because we're, we've been working very hard on this grant. We're getting good feedback that we have a good shot at winning this grant to help us develop the jobs program. It would be about high-tech people to take advantage of, and to get a lot of local workers to contribute. So the, getting on to the presentation from the Lodger's Tax. We've made a presentation to Lodger's Tax to continue the services that we've provided for three months. We did a monthly program where we developed the Explore Raton website, and then we, which we were awarded, which is, to go over, is $10,000 a month of credits with Google AdWords. So when people can type in balloon festival, that Raton's balloon festival shows up at the top of their search. Jess is going to go over some of the details about how that works and the results we've seen, but I think we can confidently say, after our 90-day trial period of getting up and running and learning this and developing the website, that we're really excited at the results and very satisfied with the results. So now what we are asking is to continue this relationship with Lodger's Tax and the City of Raton, where we would continue to manage and expand the Explore Raton website and continue to manage the Google AdWords account to attract people and attract tourists to Raton. And to do that, we're asking for $2,000 a month from November 1st of 2017 through the fiscal year of the end of, that fiscal year, whatever that is, July, June 30th of 2018. So I'm going to turn over the floor to our Google AdWords expert, Jessica, who will go over some pretty exciting data in the report you have.
I am happy to report, I finally became certified in Google AdWords, so I guess I can use the word expert now. But this has kind of been a fun project. Over the last 90 days, we've accomplished quite a bit in terms of visibility on the web. So, you know, in your packet, we do have an overview of accomplishments, and there's some really neat numbers. First and foremost, as Scott had mentioned, we revamped the Explore Raton website. If you haven't been there, please check it out. You can look at it on a computer or any mobile device, and it should be just fine. You know, we've made it mobile-friendly. You know, we've made it mobile-friendly. In addition, we've created 17 ad campaigns promoting Ratone and spent over $35,000 in advertising over the last three months. So that's the beginning of August through the end of October. That's kind of the numbers that we're looking at here. During that time, we had 584,375 people see an advertisement about Ratone. Out of those people, we had just over 25,000 people visit the Explore Ratone website in three months. And so the traction that we're getting from running this advertising is quite a bit. And then in addition to that, we facilitated the partnership with JackRabbit. If you recall, we brought that to the commission, and it was approved. You can now book a hotel at any of the local hotels that chose to participate from exploreratone.com. There's a couple in town that don't have an online presence. They can still get to information and call them. But any of the hotels that do have an online presence, you can book directly and save some of those hotel owners' money, you know, by booking directly. So that has been put on to the website as well. And although it was only up and running, I want to say, two weeks, the very first report that we got from the first two weeks showed six people actually utilized that search tool to book their room, you know, to go to these hotel websites. So in two weeks, considering we hadn't really done any advertising yet, that's not so bad. And we're hoping to find ways to strategize and, of course, drive that number up. I provided a Google campaign overview, and I'm not going to go through every line on here, but there's some really important things I wanted to point out. You'll notice that we've really been advertising a lot of our events. The Fourth of July and the balloon rally is something that everyone's very interested in. You know, we spent over $11,000 advertising that in the three months, as well as some others. You can see the Gate City Music Festival had a big draw as well. Run to Ratone, this was the very first year that we had the car and bike show, but there was a lot of online interest from that. And then, you know, our sustainability efforts are on here as well. But last but not least, the one that really sticks out is this small-town affordable living campaign that we created. You know, as we all know here in Ratone, whenever the winter comes around, events are a little fewer and far between. We definitely have areas that talk about, you know, what there is to do here during the winter, you know, the hunting, because we're a premier destination for hunting, as well as like our Christmas time activities. All of those are on the website. But we needed to find a way to spend more advertising, because in December, people aren't thinking about the Fourth of July or car shows, you know. So we created this small-town affordable living campaign, and it took off. This campaign, we had over 230,000 people that searched for small-town affordable living. It was only during the month of August, like two extra weeks. So we're looking at like a six-week span here. And we had over 11,000 people click through to our website to view more information about Ratone. And that, to be honest, I was kind of surprised at how fast it took off. A lot of times, whenever you put advertisements out, you have to wait for them to gain traction. You know, I put this up on Friday, came in on Monday, and realized we had blown almost our whole budget. And so we hit something really interesting, and that's something that we want to continue to tap into. I did want to mention, specifically with Google, the great thing is that you can drill down numbers and you can get as much information as you want, pretty much. I can tell you the city, the state, all of these people are searching from, as well as their gender and age. When you think small-town affordable living, I personally thought we were going to see some older individuals searching for that. Around 30% were under 44 years of age. So we're not just talking, there are quite a few people looking for retirement communities as well. But there's still a pool of young people that are looking to move to a smaller affordable community. And so we're really going to try and drill down and use this tool to find them and find a way to connect with them in a way other communities aren't. So I think that this is kind of a really neat thing. There's a little thing on here called a CTR. That's a click-through rate. So how many people that actually saw the advertisements clicked through. That campaign had almost a 5% click-through rate. The Google standard is 1.5. So when you look at our advertising, we're actually averaging about a 4.29% click-through rate. That means people are liking what they see, they're clicking our advertising, and that our website is relevant to what they're looking for. So as we continue to move forward with this, you know, I hope to see these numbers grow even more with the amount of dollars we can spend. Do you have questions on this before?
I do have a statement.
Yeah.
I met a woman two weeks ago who actually moved to Ratone based on the small-town affordable living site.
That's awesome. That's, yeah.
She made the decision in August, and we look to her in the future.
That's, so, it happens. You know, it does happen. I did provide a couple of examples of advertisements for you here, so that you can see kind of what they look like. So just the very first one, for instance, if someone looks for Hot Air Balloon Festival or Albuquerque Balloon Festival, they're going to get an advertisement that says, "Family's Friendly Balloon Rally, Big Balloons and Small Crowds." Click on it, and it takes them directly to something about what we do here in Ratone. You know, not only about balloon information, but hotel information and other things in the area. You know, we have something for Gate City Music Festival, and then these general hotel ads. So we're definitely going to have to be a little bit creative with hotel ads, because we can only bet $2 per click. That is, you know, stipulated by our grant. Hotels.com, Expedia.com, they can pay $20 a click. That's not a problem for them. They're a big company. So what we started doing actually is looking at the events in the area and figuring out how we could go after people looking for the Blues Fest, or Articade, or Gate City Music Festival, because the Expedia's of the world don't know Ratone. They don't know our area. And that's how we're going to try and work, you know, our way around and find people coming to these events, so that we can compete with some of these bigger websites to get them to book through Explore Ratone. So just wanted to kind of give you an idea of what those look like. General website statistics are always interesting to me, because, you know, we're constantly saying, "We need people to know more about Ratone," and this is how we get it. So 83.7% of the traffic coming to Explore Ratone is coming from our Google advertising. But over 15% is people who are actually typing in exploreratone.com. So over the last 10 years, everything that has, you know, Lodger's Tax approval has to advertise exploreratone.com. Little did we know, or little did I know, it paid off, because people remember that, and they're actually typing it in whenever they're finding our website. We have an average of 202 visitors per day, which equates to just over 6,200 visitors a month going to Explore Ratone. Over half, 55.7, are on a desktop. 34 and some change are on their phones and their restaurant tablets. So we still have quite a bit of mobile users, and I expect that to go up, you know, because we should see an increase in that as well. So looking to the future, as Jeff kind of talked about, you know, the things that we're wanting to do with the website and the things that we're hoping to continue to do, we want to create more content-rich pages. We kind of have this theory amongst us that we don't wait for perfect. You know, if we waited for perfect, we wouldn't have exploreratone.com up, and we wouldn't have, you know, these thousands of people looking at our website. So we put it up, but we realized that this is definitely not the final project. We need a lot more content. We need more localized pictures. You know, we have a lot of Marty's that the city had, but there's some things we need to stage to have good pictures of, so that way it relates to the content. You know, it's definitely a work in progress. And we need to update the information based on what people are looking for. We know right now, people are looking for small-town affordable living. So that's my priority, is to get something really neat up, to talk about where we are, you know, and our portion of the world, and why they should live here, in a way that's different than other websites, right? We want to tell our story, not just tell them facts, and so that's something we're working on. I talked a little bit about a localized strategy on booking hotel rooms. We're also using social media. We created an Explore Ratone Facebook site and Instagram account. And both of those, actually, well, our Facebook site will integrate with JackRabbit. So if you're on Facebook looking for things to do in Ratone, JackRabbit's Book Your Hotel Now will show up on your Facebook feed. And we had to have a Facebook account to make that happen. So we do have exploreratone.com, and we're working on content for that as well. But, you know, being visible, as visible as we can be, is what it's all about. And then obviously, making collaborations and partnering with other organizations is something that really matters, because there's a lot of people working on visibility and tourism. So we do link to the chambers we can ratone that Melissa puts together, you know, because that's important as well. We tend to really focus on the events that might draw tourists in, but we also have links to events just happening in the community every day. And then we are linked into Main Street's Explore Ratone app as well. So if you click on, you know, restaurants, you can see a place to click on coupons, and it takes you right to the app. So we're trying to make this as seamless as possible from a user standpoint and work together, because that's how we're going to make it happen. Does anybody have questions on, I know I told you a lot of information pretty quickly.
I think one other new thing that's come up is with the result of this new grant proposal with Grow Ratone this week with New Mexico Economic Development, is Grow Ratone is applying for a Google Grant that then we'll manage. So we'll have not only the $10,000 a month from the center to promote Ratone, then we'll take that $10,000 from Grow Ratone. And that we can also utilize for a lot of the work that Grow Ratone kind of does, that recruiting of companies, that recruiting of more of the economic base to Ratone. So I think now we'll have two tools, two pots of money to pull from to promote Ratone.
And those are credits, correct?
They're like a credit, right. We just, we get to burn up.
Money doesn't change hands.
Money doesn't change hands, exactly.
I'd like to commend you on your efforts and the progress that you've made. I think it's very good.
Yeah, this is all in line. I was fortunate enough to attend the National City Summit, and Facebook and Amazon both put on presentations. And Facebook's was especially caught my eye. A lot of folks are doing, when they get to the events, they're doing Facebook Live, saying, "Come on down." They're doing city commission meetings, Facebook Live, to get that message out. We're going to put Dan on Facebook Live to promote the grocery receipt tax, you know.
You laugh, but that's actually something you should be doing.
That's what's happening, and this is right in line with everything. I commend you guys for being on top of this. Absolutely.
It's a hell of a job you're doing. It really is.
Yeah, I think really exciting, because Jessica's really, the website you've got is, Jessica's really been the main force behind that. It just looks, it looks like a super expensive website. It really is. It's a nice, very professional, very, very in line with the New Mexico true theme that's seen across the state, so I'm very pleased.
Can you clarify some stuff on this fat pipe?
Yes.
Exactly. It's just, it's using a space or subletting space so that people can set something up at an affordable price?
Yeah, it's like a big, so I took one of the office spaces we had upstairs that was unused, and I took some of the old cubicle dividers left over from Highlands, and I kind of retooled them, and took some old desks and flipped them over and made them. So I just reused a bunch of materials, but then got about $5,000 from Leeds and created this open office floor plan. So it's got a few desks, it's got a conference table, it has a flat-screen TV, printer, and so forth. And the idea is, for people that, a lot of the issues for people that work at home is, A, the internet, to get high-speed internet is really exorbitantly expensive, and you can't really get the speeds like we can get at the center. We have fiber to our building. So in this grant to New Mexico, we're going for 500 megabits per second up and down, which is just really blazing, blazing fast internet speed, where nobody can really afford that at home. So, but you can come in and basically rent a chair from us for $100 a month for three visits a week. Come in, work all day, go across the street, get some coffee, network with some other people, and try to create that, it's part of this idea of creating that downtown culture, where people are coming downtown to do business, exchange with people, network with people, and create this environment that supports entrepreneurs. And when I went, I did go down to Albuquerque a couple of weeks ago to visit their facility, the Fat Pipe facility, and interviewed with them, and they asked me questions, and it was just, these are great people that really want to support rural New Mexico. But one of the comments from Stu, the director down there, which just, he just stunned me, he talked about the percentage of people that are going to work remotely over the next 10 years. And I don't remember the piece of data, of course, in my brain, but it just gave me pause, like, really, that many people are going to be transitioning to remote-type work? And he said, "That's the future. That's why we're here. That's why we're attracting the kind of people and exercises. That's why we want to do this statewide and create this network in New Mexico, is because that's the trajectory." And it was really exciting to have them contact us and say, "What's going on in Ratone?" And then really exciting to just say, "They're just thrilled to death and are ready to put a sign on the outside of our building, Fat Pipe Ratone," which will get us all kinds of media traffic and fun stuff like that. So we're thrilled to death that they've approached us and think we, it is aspirational, right? I'm not sure how many tech entrepreneurs are existing in Ratone right now. There might be one or two hiding out right now. But it's kind of like setting the table. We're going to set the table for people to come. We've got our commercial kitchen going. We've got our coworking space going. We're advertising the heck out of Ratone with this product right here. We're setting the table to try to attract people to our town.
Right. And I think it's important to mention as well, we've talked internally about not only looking for just these tech entrepreneurs that exist, but holding workshops for local entrepreneurs that could go tech that just don't know it yet, on things like Etsy, you know, possibly eBay. And there's also different places where you can go online if you have a skill. Say you're really good at doing books, and you understand QuickBooks, you can go online and do that for people. You know, and just teaching people how to use things like guru.com and upwork.com to do their work, because some of them may not realize the possibilities are out there.
To get into the weeds just a little bit more on this, one of the things with this grant with New Mexico is creating opportunities for entry-level workers in remote work opportunities. So it's kind of like call center work, but you're not in a call center. You're going to either work from home or work like from a facility like we have downtown. And they have a program in Grants, and they have a program in Las Vegas doing this right now. They call it Solo Works. And so, as you know, at the center, we've been struggling for a year trying to get people to sign up to San Jose Community College to take a four-year degree, even a two-year degree. And it hasn't, we just haven't gotten traction there. So in shifting our strategy, we thought, "Well, let's find those, let's find those workers that are working below their capability." We've got lots of entry-level jobs in Ratone flipping burgers or working cashier, being cashiers, but I'll bet you there's a good handful of folks that could find themselves a little career and then make better money in some type of remote work. So we've been talking to Sofia Ortiz at Sarah Jobs for Progress and Paul at Grow Ratone, where they're making a database of companies that hire remote workers. And our project is to go out to the community to try to find that little handful of people that are not working to their capacity, that could do better, and give them an environment to do so here at the center.
And I'm going to be the devil's advocate.
Yeah.
You're subletting, and you don't pay utilities, but the subletters will have to pay utilities. So at some point, you're going to have to sit down with the utility companies and Mr. Berry and work up some kind of policy.
That's what we've been doing, like so LMNOC Broadcasting, they're paying their utility for their space.
How are you doing that? Are you taking a percentage?
We take the year-over-year change and build that to the LMNOC.
Okay, well.
So it's sort of to capture that increase in percent.
Yeah.
So the coworking spaces is, of course, a little bit different, because it's, somebody's going to rent a chair for a few hours a day, several times a week, over a month. So that one, what we're actually doing, and I sat down with Scott to go over this, is for the New Mexico grant, we needed to come up with match. So what we did is we put a number. We said $500 a month for that office and $100 a month for every entrepreneur working out of the coal camp kitchen, and we added it up and pushed that across the table to say, "There's a good portion of our match right there." The center is offering some match to get this grant of some of our labor, and Grow Ratone is offering some of their labor as part of this match, so that we can win this grant to bring some money to Ratone from New Mexico Economic Development. So that's been our strategy to, how do we leverage that great facility downtown to bring jobs, bring income, grant money into the community? So that's, that's the idea with this solo workspace, with this Fat Pipe Ratone space.
And Mayor, we have looked at those hard costs on a case-by-case basis. We do have that arrangement in place now for, you know, one of the sublets, and I think we will continue to do that. We would make some judgments going forward, depending on the situation. You know, I think the City of Ratone, we're supportive of this effort to seek out entrepreneurs, you know, a central piece of our strategic plan, and really be innovative and light on our feet as far as, as. our feet as far as this new economy that we see developing. So I think we'll make those judgments as we go and we've had extensive discussions about that, so.
Well, as long as RPS is aware of what you're doing.
We've met with them as well and so we do have a, you know, for-profit business with a small operation there and they do pay their utilities, so.
Right, but there was never an account set up.
Right.
So we have no place to post it.
That's right.
There are, there are little tricky things.
It's an issue from the end code standpoint.
Yeah, that need to be just ironed out and so everybody's in agreement.
Yeah. Right, right.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would make a motion then that we approve their recommendation.
I'll second it.
Wait a minute, they didn't make a recommendation.
It came from.
No, it didn't come from them. They didn't have a court to meet.
No. So we're on the table, so we get a recommendation or what do you want?
No, I think we can go ahead and do it as long as they have money in their budget for advertising.
I was just doing a little bit of math here and I think the contingency fund still has funds available, so that would probably be the best line item to take it from. And then later on, when we meet with the Lodger's Tax Board again in January, we'll kind of review their balances and then if we need to come back to the commission later on to do a budget adjustment for some type of event that comes up between January and June, we could certainly do that.
Because you said it's time-sensitive, didn't you, Scott?
Correct, incorrect.
So it would come from the contingency fund line item.
Yeah.
Okay, then I would revise my motion to accept this recommendation from us, I guess. Then we use the contingency fund money to take care of this.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve $2,000 a month to the Sustainability Center for Advertising.
Where was the second?
Yeah. We have a roll call vote.
Mayor, Protem Sagata?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
That's the name, State.
And Mayor M.
Yes, motion passes. Deliberate an Act on Correction of Resolution Numbering from the November 14th Commission Meeting. Numbers 52 through 55 were used and should have been numbered 54 through 57.
Mayor and Commissioner, at the last city commission meeting, we had on the agenda resolutions 52, which was the Mileage Rate Amendment Resolution. And then we also had a budget adjustment number four, which was 53. Appointment of interim city clerk was 54. And then 55 was appointment of deputy clerks. So it was brought to my attention when Tricia was logging these in that we were off in our numbering sequence. So we just thought we would bring that back to the commission for approval to actually make that correction. And the ones on your agenda this evening reflect the correct numbering sequence. So the mileage amendment would be 54, the budget adjustment would be 55, and then appointment of city clerk, 56, and deputy clerk appointments would be 57. So just wanted to bring that to your attention and request your approval to make that correction.
I'll move to approve the corrections to resolutions numbering on, from the November 14th Commission meeting, numbers 52 through 55 were used and should have been numbered 54 through 57.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the renumbering of resolutions from the November 14th meeting just due to an air. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. City managers report.
Mayor and Commissioner, I would report to you on the construction at the Rattone Municipal Airport. The construction of Taxiway Delta is now complete. That is the new taxiway which will help us utilize the flight school. That will involve the construction of 1,520-layer-feet of taxiway now complete, a good project. We will go into project closeout as stated by the city treasurer. In regard to Taxiway Alpha, we had constructed the 2,400-linier-feet that was planned under the project and upon review, we had some residual funds, project funds. So we are in the process of constructing an additional 400-linier-feet of Taxiway Alpha. That's a reconstruction of that existing taxiway that's parallel to our primary runway. So with that, we will have constructed about one-third of Taxiway Alpha. And then in future years, we would banker entitlements and I think construct, reconstruct the remainder of Alpha in those third increments. So it'll be a few years, we'll come back with the entitlements and take on the next portion of Taxiway Alpha. What's remaining out there currently is one day of asphalt paving. So we would estimate that if we get back to a day of warm weather and the plant is operational, everything is good, we will have the construction of Taxiway Alpha complete by the end of the week and we'll do project closeout on that. Also, project is going great, a little cold today, but the weather has really been exceptional for that construction. So we will complete that, close it out and I think it's been an excellent project. One other issue that I would bring forward, Mayor, as I would let the commission know that we did get a donation of artwork today. This is from Bill Allen, a local resident, and it is a drawing that was done by Joe Apache, who is the former mayor of Rattone. This was in the collection of Bill Allen. He would like to donate it to the city. I did have a conversation with Bill where I stated that we were setting up artwork in the commission room that really demonstrates the talent of our local artists and also reflects Rattone history or Rattone landscapes. And I would recommend that we hang this in the commission room to add to our collection. We've got a couple of donations here previously, about one a year, and I think it makes a great addition to the collection. So I want to say thanks to Mr. Allen for his donation and, you know, recognize the talent of Joe Apache. That's all I have there.
Okay. All right. Anybody have anything else? Is there any other business to come before this commission? If not, speeding adjournment.